Good evening, everybody. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting Thursday, June 9th, 2022. First on the agenda is the reorganization of the board. I don't know what you guys want to do if you want to wait to pass.
Yeah.
We delay that till the other members are back.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
It will for you.
I'm not sure I want to do it right now.
Yeah, I'd prefer to wait till.
Yeah, we have to wait.
And let them wait. Everybody's here, yeah, at least four of us, so.
Yeah.
So does somebody want to make a motion to? Motion to continue. Continue the reorganization. Reorganization until July 20. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Next is approval of minutes. First is the April 14th, 2022 meeting.
Make a motion and approve it? Second?
And a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Next is the April 28th, 2022 minutes.
Motion to approve? Second?
Second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. And the last one is the May 24th, 2022.
Motion to approve? Second?
And a second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. We have the review of the new fee schedule and application forms. I think, why don't we wait till the end?
Yeah.
So, because we have a number of hearings tonight and get these folks in and out of here as expeditiously as possible, so we'll put that on at the end. All right, so first on the agenda is the continued hearing of Rick Montgomery, 75 Dale Street. Do you know what's happening with that? Can I see? He wanted to throw up.
Yeah, we have a letter here saying they were drawing without prejudice. Without prejudice.
I think we did, yeah. Yep. The zoning board of appeals has a request submitted by Richard Montgomery for the property of 75 Dale Street. We respectfully request to have our variance for a shared driveway withdrawn without prejudice. Understand under Mass General laws, Chapter 48, that we have found an alternative solution and that the zoning board of appeals has not build a decision, filed a decision by the town clerk and that we have the ability to withdraw our application. Your consideration is greatly appreciated. Please let us know your decision at your earliest convenience.
I'd like to make a motion. Do you want a motion on that?
Yes, please, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we, 75 Dale Street, we respectfully, let's see, they request a withdrawal without prejudice. That's it.
That's good.
Second?
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Next on the agenda is 65 Captain Standish Drive, the petition of Stephen Maniscalco? Maniscalco?
Maniscalco.
Maniscalco, I'm sorry. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Could you just identify yourself, please?
Stephen Maniscalco, 65 Captain Standish Drive.
Let me just read the notice here. Public hearing notice, the town of Abington, zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 12th, 2022, at 7:10 p.m. at the Abington Town offices, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington, on the petition of Stephen Maniscalco, 65 Captain Standish Drive, Abington, for a variance under Section 175-29 for a six-foot side setback to construct a 14-by-28 addition at 65 Captain Standish Drive. The property is located on Assessors Map, 25 lot 21, in the R30 zone.
You know, Mr. Chairman, there is a plot plan here.
Yes.
That we asked for.
Yep, saw that. Okay, Stephen, if you want to just tell us what you're looking to do and?
We're looking to add on in addition, create a master bath, walk-in closets in an office that will have a laundry inside of it. Full basement for storage.
So you're adding on to the bedrooms at all or just?
No, so where there's currently a window in my bedroom, that will become a door for the bathroom.
Oh, okay. So the setback requirement for the sidelines, Aaron in 20?
Yeah.
Not 30, so that's not requirement. But the side setbacks are 20 feet. And you have, what, 15 feet is what you're looking for?
A little more, so about five foot.
Yeah, looking for five foot.
Because this old one said 28 feet. That doesn't make much sense, the old plot plan. You see this?
Yeah, that was right from the.
So this is the new one, so.
Exactly, exactly. That didn't show the proposed addition on it.
All right.
So that's why I had to go out and obviously get an up-to-date one.
So in order for us to grant a variance, there's a few things that you have to prove to us that exist, please, according to the statute. So number one is that there are circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography, which especially affect the land or structure in question, but which do not affect generally the zoning district in which the land or structure is located. So it doesn't appear to be the soil conditions.
No.
Right, the shape of the lot is basically a rectangle.
More or less, yeah.
And the topography, is it, what's the topography like? Is it flat?
Completely. Well, you know, it's like in the front, it's raised up a little bit, you know, it's just towards the street.
Yeah.
But, you know, not much. And then the back is completely flat.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a conforming piece of property. I don't know why they said it was a non-conforming.
I know, yeah.
You saw that too?
I did, yeah. So that's our dilemma, is that something has to be relating here. So if you had an oddly shaped lot where, you know, maybe it was kind of triangular and the sidelines were kind of off.
Yeah.
But where this is.
Who dictated that it was non-conforming?
No, it's not the non-conforming issue. It's the fact that it's circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, and topography. That's why you need to get the variances, because of those three, one of those three conditions are affecting your property. Maybe if, so say if you had a small piece of a brook or a lake or something out in the back, so skewed your property.
Yeah.
This is kind of really straight, you know, back, side, front.
Right.
So in order for us to grant a variance, there has to be something affecting either the shape, the topography, or the soil conditions.
Okay.
So you're not automatic, just, you're not automatically entitled to a variance.
Yeah.
You have to prove certain things to get the variance. And the first thing you have to prove is that the shape of the lot is odd, so I need a variance. Or that the topography is odd, so I need a variance. Or that the soil conditions are such that I can't build here because the soil is not good, but it's okay over here, or something like that. So that's what I need, that's what we need from you, is for you to tell us why this is needed based upon the conditions of the lot.
I wouldn't want to go back, you know, because of a, you know, doghouse for the, that was like a bulkhead, you know, so, and then I wouldn't want to go up, so I can't go to the right of my garage because there's only nine, roughly nine feet or so for that garage that was previously built, so.
Could you make it smaller so you don't need the extra five feet, or would that be?
Nine feet wide? No, not really. You know, I actually thought it was going to be, you know, a 15-foot variance, that's why I proposed 14 feet wide, you know, so I don't.
Yeah, well, I'm going to open it up.
Whoa, 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 yeah. So going off to the, you know, left, you know, looking at the house is the, you know, to me, the most cost-effective, which is, you know, with building prices today is, you know, not the number one driving factor, but it plays a huge part, and you can only imagine how much it would cost if I had to build up.
I understand.
And I have solar panels on my house, which I'd have to remove.
Right. But this, as I said, there's certain things that we have to have you prove to us in order to, we just can't grant a variance just because it looks nice or?
No, I somewhat understand that, but I, you know, I don't know what else to say other than I have a fairly cookie cutter lot, and going where I proposed, you know, to me is really the only option.
You couldn't go out back?
No, I have patio.
And keep it within the 20-feet setback?
No, there's a patio out there, there's the stairs going down to the basement.
Does anybody have any questions on the board?
The office, is that something that you'd need to have? Is that your business, something, or?
That's my girlfriend's, you know, works primarily from home, and, you know, as you guys can probably imagine, split levels, there is no closet space in them. You know, there's really, you know, there's, the reasons we're opposing adding an office and closets, you know, there's, for us, there's really good reasons to do that. You know, we're shoehorned in there as we are. And, you know, knocking seven or so feet and reducing it to, you know, say 21 feet or 28 feet, really doesn't, to me, make any much of a difference. You know, the length of it, you know, if it was, if I did only go nine feet, or if it was 15, you know, then I would have, you know, it would have been that size anyways.
Yeah.
You know?
But the town of Dallas, you don't mean bylaws?
I get it.
For a reason, and so, but that's all right, let's, are there any questions?
No, I have no questions.
So now I'm going to ask you to step back a second, and then open it up to the public and see if they have any input. Okay. Yes, sir. If you can come up and state your name and address, please.
My name's Bill Barstis. I live at 77 Captain Standish Drive. I'm, the house that will be most affected by this addition, I'm right next door. And where he's building this is basically in a dead zone, that you can't really view with this on the side of the house, between the two houses. I have a big two-car garage right next door that I was granted, but you're talking 15 years ago. It's not going to affect anything, it's going to enhance the property value, you know, of the area. It's not going to affect any kind of dissuasion or any kind of physical change to the area. The land is flat. Said I've been there 45 years, I know what's going on, I know the topography, and it's, he's just building an addition.
Yeah.
And the one that, as I said, would be most affected by it, the old neighbor would be me, because I'm right next door, and there's still plenty of room between the two buildings. There's, there's nothing, and to have it in there would be a blessing in a way, because it does kill a dead spot between the houses. And if you saw Steve's house when he first moved in and you saw it now, you'd go, wow, the kid really, really does a great job, you know, and he takes care of his property, and it's, you know, I really hope that you grant it for him, because there's really no reason not to. You know, he's been in the town, his daughter's still going to town, he came here, and as I said, I've been here 45 years, so I think I have a little bit to say, you know, in this. So, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Anybody else?
Thank you for your support.
Okay, thanks very much. Anybody else in the public have any input? Thank you. We do have a letter.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, this is from Chris, yeah.
Not only did he write the letter, he came to support.
Yeah. Thanks. Hey, Steve, do you have anything else you want to say, or?
No.
Anybody else have any questions, or?
Oh, we're going to close it to the floor, or? That was the floor. You want to close it to the floor?
Well, I guess so, yeah. Do we want to close, I'm not sure we want to close the hearing yet.
No, 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 just the floor.
Yeah. So what do we want to do here?
Well, it's like you said, it's not showing anything that, that by the bylaw, those three things, but.
One of those three.
And not even one of them, but, but I do have the neighbor saying that it wouldn't affect him, and there is a good distance between the homes. It kind of looks like they got a variance for the garage, if I'm not mistaken. Kind of looks like that.
Yeah, that's closer than 20.
Has to be. How close to the property?
It's closer than 20 feet.
Right. So the only thing I think of is, you know, wife or girlfriend or whatever, working at home, I mean, a lot of people are working from home, and they need an office.
Can we, if we were to grant this, it would still be within limitations of whether water department could grant the additional bathroom to the house? Would that be an issue?
Yeah, that's something you have to take up with, if that is an issue, then.
That is an issue.
Yeah.
Right?
Is there?
Yes.
Yes.
But you have an existing structure, so, I don't know, you'd.
You'd have to talk it over to the water department if it puts it first.
Yeah.
This is just another step you'll have to take after this, if we go through with this. So there's no wetlands here, nothing?
No.
No water issues?
No. It's level surface.
That would, that would help us if there were. That's what, that's why we're asking those questions.
I know we don't like doing this, but given the fact that we've granted a variance on the garage and we have the neighbor here without complaint, it appears that even though it's a conforming lot, it doesn't appear to be affecting anybody, any of the butters at all, and nobody else came to protest the process. It does not meet the requirement of the filing, based on what I understand.
Now, let's see.
So it would have to be a, an override.
Maybe, maybe you could stretch the fact that this was a, in our, this is an R30 zone now, right? Which means it's supposed to be 30,000 square feet.
Correct.
But it's not 30,000 square feet, it's 20,000 square, 27,000 square feet.
Right, it is, yeah, right.
So if you.
It's a small lot.
It's the fact that the lot is, I think it's a real stretch, because I've kind of turned this argument down before, but.
Yeah, I know.
It's a, the shape of the lot is smaller than what is, would be a conforming lot of 30,000 square feet.
Okay.
And because of that, there's a hardship, and.
That's a good reach.
Because, yeah. It'll come back to bite me somewhere down the road. You wait and see.
I guarantee.
Somebody else will be looking for one, and they'll say, oh, no, you won't, but.
No, but it comes, it always comes back.
That's the other problem, right? If you start doing this without actually having.
Good justification.
Right, then, then you're in trouble, because everybody in the neighborhood's going to want to do it, and then zoning's there for a reason. It's there, the town adopts zoning, and they put it in for a reason, because they want certain distances between houses and that sort of thing, so. We don't, we don't make the zoning law, we just.
Enforce it.
Try to.
Or try to.
Try to enforce it, yeah. And I guess that's.
So we have a non-conforming, slightly.
So if you wanted to hang your hat on the shape of the lot is?
Yeah, the shape of the lot's not bad, I mean, it's.
No, but because the shape of the lot is less than 30,000 square feet.
Right, yeah.
I guess you could potentially make that argument.
And if you grant this, he's not coming back, because he's got no other.
Unless he wants to tear up the back of his house completely. Yeah, if he went back, then we could keep it within the 20 feet, so. What's the pleasure?
Well, again, we've really tried, this place really tried not to give out variances for ones that didn't qualify. But I do see, like you said, it's a small lot, there's already been a variance on this property.
Or the opposite side of the.
And they're looking to build an office in today's world, that's people work from home.
Correct.
He's looking for storage.
I think he gets by the other four criteria, right? Due to the circumstances especially affecting the land or structure, little enforcement would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, I think that's there. The desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, I think that's there.
Yep, yep.
But desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw, which I think that's there, just for the fact that there's a prior variance on the other side, potentially.
And it's 14 feet, it's not, he's not asking for 25 feet.
Yeah, it's, it's.
He's leaving a buffer zone of 15.
Right.
Closer to 16.
So what should be is 20, he's looking for 15, as opposed to, so it's a five, really, a five-foot variance, it's not, yeah.
And it's kind of written out wrong, and it's, seems to me it's written out wrong in the.
Yeah, but he's got the plan here, so I think, we, if it passes.
Okay.
You'd grant it according to the plan that was submitted.
All right. As you can see, we're trying to dot the i's and cross the t's.
Somebody want to make a motion? Well, first, we should close the hearing, I guess, at this point.
Yeah.
So why don't we make a motion to close the hearing to the public, so we're not going to take any more public input, okay?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now we can act on whatever motion is made.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for 65 Captain Standish Drive by Stephen Maniscalco for a variance under 75-29 for a six-foot side setback, construction of a 14-by-20 addition, the proposed assessment located on map 25 lot 21, the R30 zone.
With, with, go ahead. With us noticing that the lot size is smaller than usual.
Yeah, based, I think, based upon the shape of the lot.
There it is.
Yeah.
And the submitted plan.
Second.
Okay. And that the, the variance is in conformance with the submitted plan, so you can't go beyond what the submitted plan, okay? Is that a motion and a second?
That's, that's motion and a second.
You get that? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Good luck. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you for your support, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Budapest.
Budapest and passed. Budapest and passed.
You said 51 years, it's 72 years.
I was, I was, there's 27 students that look at me like, um, do you know Budapest was two, I said, no, I thought it was one country, it was like, who knew? All right, yeah, well, it just goes, it teaches everyone something, no.
Okay, next on the agenda is the petition of Brian Donlin and Stephanie Wright, 239 Birch Street. I'll read the hearing notice. Public hearing notice, the town of Abington, zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 12th, 2022, at 7:15 p.m. at the Abington Town offices, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington, on the petition of Brian Donlin and Stephanie Wright for a special permit under Section 175-29-13 for a side yard setback of zero inches and for a special permit under Section 175-26 for the garage to extend, to exceed, I'm sorry, 875 square feet at 239 Birch Street. The property is located on Assessors Map, 49 lot 26, in the R30 zone.
How you doing? I know that property very well. I used to live on John Street.
Right around the corner.
Yep.
So can you just tell us what you're looking to do? Yeah, name and address first.
Brian Donlin, 239 Birch Street.
Stephanie Wright, 239 Birch Street.
How are you?
Good.
Good. So I believe the property falls in the CBD zone, I don't know if that makes a difference.
It is, yeah.
All right.
It does make a difference.
We bought the house, and it has a two-car garage out back with a carport off the side that's already existing. When we went to enclose the carport, we found out that there were no permits available for the carport, but we are being taxed on it, and we'd like to enclose that carport.
So basically make it a three-car garage, or is this going to be more of a shed kind of?
Storage, right?
Yeah, storage. When we walk into the carport, there's a garage on that side, I'd like to move that door to the front and have that be the egress for the garage there.
You see, in the picture here, there's a garage door on the right-hand side when you walk in?
Yeah, if you're looking at the front, there's two garage doors.
Yes.
On the right side.
Yes.
And then, and close, yeah, and close the carport right there, yes.
Yeah.
And then put the door that accesses that side in the front, and take down that wall there.
Yeah, I know this far too well. I remember when he built it. And I knew Al very well.
He took good care of it.
Good guy.
Very nice guy.
Yep. It says that, I think it was the bill inspector said it was very well-built.
Yeah.
Carport.
Yeah.
Saw that.
Yeah.
The comments, the comments from our building inspector was that, in our opinion, the existing carport is extremely structurally sound. Submitted application was reviewed by the property owner and to ensure zoning bylaw requirements, if applicable, were applicable, were met, so. And the previous owner used to use it for his boat, just put his boat on, so that makes it so, you know.
So is that, is that right on the property line?
That's about three feet off.
Yeah.
But you're not going to change that? It's going to stay?
No, just right where it is.
Enclose it?
Yes.
They did build the carports, but I think there was one.
So in the CBD zone, you can go right up the property line with a special permit.
That was my first visit to the zoning board. Well, my neighbor.
Mine too.
On this, what's that?
Mine too.
Yeah. He was going to build this and the addition.
So the required setback for, in the CBD zone for the side is 10 feet, but you can go closer with a special permit.
Okay.
Not a variance like we just had.
Yep.
Special permit, which is a little easier to get.
Okay. So basically, the building's there.
Yes.
And he built it.
Okay.
And you're just enclosing it, that's all?
Correct.
Yeah, it's there, so that's.
Yeah. Get all that out.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
Petitions?
So you have no plans on changing door structures of the two garage doors, to make it a double or anything like that?
No.
You're just going to move the door over from left to right, make that the entrance in there?
Yes.
It's a storage-only facility, you're not going to put a bathroom in there, you're not going to do any yellow living?
No.
No living?
No living.
Storage only? Would you be putting any type of light near or by that door when you move the door over there?
There's already existing lights in there, but maybe move.
On the outside exterior, on the driveway?
There's lights out there.
There's already light there already? So that's ample enough for you, without having to add more lighting?
I'd say, so there's a floodlight that opened, that illuminates the carport, so you can just turn that.
All right. I just want to make sure, there's one right here on the corner, there's a lighting issue for the neighbor, a budding, a budding neighbor. There's one in the corner, so if they put a door there, this light will adequately take care of that lighting process.
Is there an entrance from the carport into the garage area?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Just a regular door that opens and closes?
Yes.
That's not going to change, that's going to?
So that wall will get, that door that we have will then come onto the outside, and it will take that wall down.
It can take the whole wall down?
Yes.
Okay, so it's going to potentially be a three-car garage?
We're going to put the, like, a regular door on a garage.
You're going to put a regular door.
So it's still going to be a two-car garage?
Yeah.
But just kind of an extended two-car garage?
So there's no, there's no garage doors being added?
No.
Okay.
We'll have access to that through the existing. We'll have access to that through the existing.
Through the existing, yeah.
So it's definitely just closing it in, taking the wall on the inside down and putting the door on the outside.
Correct. Okay.
Um, windows? Where the windows gone?
Uh, there's existing windows in the, the carport, but, uh.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's right.
There's not going to be any windows there. I think they're going to be covered and then the two windows that are on the inside of the carport would just be moved to the front also along.
All right, okay.
Okay. Is there any structural issues with them moving that wall?
That would be up to the.
Yeah, they would, they would put a beam in.
That's up to.
Yeah.
They'd have to come down and inspect it, I would imagine.
Okay.
There's a nice truss system, I'm told, in the, in the attic that goes from the back in the little.
Yeah, it has to be.
Yeah.
He was a builder.
My big, my biggest concern is, is that the, the, um, roof structure is attached above the, that structural line. So if you were going to remove the wall below that.
Yeah.
I'm a little concerned with, that's my only, I don't have that concern. I'm just asking the question.
All right.
Support wise, that's, that's a long structure to cover. If you remove that wall, you may have seep, uh, seepage.
Yes.
So you may have to put a stronger beam in to support that weight of that.
Definitely want to do it right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, the building inspector.
The building inspector will have to, will look at that when you do that, so. All right, I'm done.
So I'm going to ask you to step back for a second, see if there's anybody here in the, uh, the public who, anybody here in the public who'd like to comment on this particular petition? Okay, if not, we'll bring it back to the board. Make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
No, most opposed.
Yeah, again, okay, this hearing.
Yep. Yep. Okay, what do we want to do?
I did second that.
We closed it. So now what do we want to do with the petition?
It's been a while.
I want to open and close it. I don't know what we're doing.
It's been a while, Andy, you know?
You know, the DNU is too.
So special permit, uh, is to authorize a use which would not be allowed generally or without restriction throughout any particular zoning district, but which, if controlled as to the number, area, location, relation to the neighborhood and other characteristics, would not be injurious to the public health, safety, welfare, morals, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, prosperity, or general welfare. So those are the, those are the conditions as far as a special permit. Obviously not as stringent as a, for a variance, so. So does somebody want to make a motion?
You got it.
I'll make a motion, um, for the request of Brian and, uh, Donlin and Stephanie Wright of a special permit under 175 dash 29613 for a side yard setback of zero inches. Uh, for a special permit under 17526 for a garage to be, to exceed 875 square feet at 239 Birch Street. Uh, the property is located in assessment map 49 lot 26 in the R30 zone. And, and it's also a CBD?
It's in the CBD.
It's in the CBD district.
Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. And I mean that. Enjoy the house, it's a beautiful house.
Okay, next on the agenda is the petition of Curtis Hart, 367 Rockland Street. He's here.
I was here last month. I was here, I was saying, where is everybody?
Oh, no.
Where is everybody? I looked online, it said canceled, I went, oh.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
So let me just read the, uh, the hearing notice. Public hearing notice, the town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 12th, 2022 at 7:20 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenowitz Way, Abington. On the petition of Curtis Hart for a special permit under section 175 dash 212 to alter an existing in-law apartment into a two-family dwelling at 367 Rockland Street. The property is located on assessors map 21 lot 95 in the R20 zone. Are you?
That's me.
Can you just identify your name?
I'm Curtis Hart, I live at 367 Rockland Street, Abington, Mass. Been there 22 years.
Your parents owned it before you?
No, my parents lived next door.
Lived next door?
Then when, uh, my dad passed away, I put the in-law on for my, uh, it's actually my stepmother. I called her my mother and then, uh, she, she passed away, um, 7th of, of January.
Okay.
And my wife passed away at the, the 26th of December.
Oh, good lord, sorry, sorry.
So I'm in, uh, and my older brother passed away in September.
Could you move back a little bit more?
Yeah, I think we're done right there, I got it.
Who's your older brother?
Uh, Charlie. You knew Chris, right?
Chris was in my class.
Yeah, I was, I saw Chris and Sandy, they have a house in Florida.
Okay.
So I was down there, uh, in April. I went down for a week.
Yep.
They're living the life.
Can I ask you something? Why didn't they make you put that tunnel?
What, the bridge?
Yeah, the bridge.
They, you know, well, at the time, because they said they couldn't, you couldn't have two, um.
Two separate buildings, this whole same thing?
But you know something, it was the best thing I did. Because, you know, instead of going down and going back up to see my mother, I could just open the door and just walk over.
I've just never seen anything like that.
It was, you know, it was very expensive at the time, you know, but, uh, it was probably the best thing I did.
Okay.
You know, then I just, when I went to work, I'd open the door, would open the door wherever left last and my cat would go over and keep my mother company. So actually, you know, at the time I was like, it was like $15,000 in '07. But now looking back, it was the best money I spent.
It was just, it's just a weird design.
It's neat, you know?
Did you do that or?
Well, what would happen? We came in from front of the zoning board and we had two, we had, I had two prints. You know, because, uh, my buddy's a builder, he's built my house and he built that too. And, uh, so we talked it over what we were going to do. And then I would like, he goes, either you won't let me put it far apart or you have to put it up tight. Well, I did some electrical work in a house that had a bridge.
Okay.
So we hired an architect, designed it.
So that's where the design came from?
Yeah, I, I was something I saw years ago in, um, I mean, you see them in Boston. I'm a union electrician in Boston.
Okay.
So we see them all the time in Boston, but I've never seen one in a house. So it's, it's pretty neat.
Yeah.
You don't know you're in it, you're just walking down a hallway.
But you see it every time you come to the car?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Every time I turn that corner, I turn to the car. I go by all the time.
Yeah, it's, um, it's pretty neat, you know, and it's got two fire doors on either side.
Okay.
So basically there's no interior walls or anything, you know? I've been around building my whole life. So there's two fire doors on the, the other side. There's really no, like, walls that have to be doubled in sheet rock and stuff. And there's, you can see in the pictures that I sent you, there's, there's two egresses from the, uh, the unit. There's the door when it walks in, there's stairs that go up. And then there's the, uh, the deck and a set of stairs that go down there. Plus obviously enter through the garage too.
Interesting, very interesting.
I, you know, my, I'd like to stay there, you know, but we'll see, you know? I'm, uh, I'm getting old, you know, and do what I do for a living.
We all are.
I'm pretty busted up, you know, I gotta, you know, I'm sort of going to need help in the, in the mortgage, you know? I get a, I get a fused ankle, a fused neck, torn shoulders.
So why don't you?
Rough out there.
Kurt, why don't you just tell us what you want to do here?
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to make it a two-family. And, uh, it seems like I meet all the.
What's the number of rooms in each unit that you're going to have?
Okay, well, the in-law have one bedroom. This should be laid out, it has one bedroom, a bathroom, a living room, and a full kitchen.
Yep.
And, uh, what's the, that's 30 by 26, so it's around 800, 790 feet.
Yep.
Exactly.
Yep.
Um, on my, my side of the house, there is three bedrooms, uh, two baths, a living room, a kitchen, and a dining room. And the, uh, the raid, my, basically my storage ranch, there's a big storage ranch in the basement.
So I've, I've, I've never seen, uh, this request before and he is on the board, so.
A request to go to a two-family?
Yeah.
Well, he's in a zone that allows it by special permits, so.
Okay, and are you talking just about the in-law's side?
Yeah, I just want to, you know what I mean?
To me, but it's only, uh, really a one, would it be really a one?
Well, that's what I was, we can put conditions on it. So we could say it's going to be just a one-bedroom apartment.
It is a one-bedroom.
Right, there you go, there you go.
It could be conditioned, it could be part of the special. If we grant it, we could say nothing more than a one-bedroom apartment there.
Are you keeping the two carport, uh, car garage underneath that's staying?
Yes.
Will, will that be for that one unit or will that be shared between the two units?
Well, I have, I have four car garages.
Okay.
So I, um, depends if, basically if, if the, basically I'd like to rent it to one person.
Okay.
Because I, I don't want younger people in.
Right.
I go to bed, stuff, very disciplined for me. But, uh, so that's what I'm looking for. If they want to rent the, the one bay, you know, park and give one bay with it and I'll keep my ER equipment in the other bay. And, you know, I might diet the car and for parking the motorcycle that are in mine.
The tunnel's staying, right? The, the bridge, the bridge.
Basically what I'm going to do is just shut the doors. And the fire alarm can be broken right on the bridge.
Now, i- is it up to date? Does it have hot whites, hope to tattoos?
It was built, the house was built in 2000.
Okay.
I built that.
All right.
In '07, I put the addition on and actually I, you know, doing what I do, I put a, I put a smoke on the bridge.
Okay.
I put an access for it and then the fire department came and said, you don't need it. So I figured I'll break it there and I'll put a smoke with my house and I'll just lock both doors. This, this leaves a dead space, you know?
So Curtis, if, if it were to be granted, uh, the building inspector has asked us to provide you with a couple of points of information. I would ask the board to remind the petitioner, the property may need to be brought up to the residential building code as it pertains to a two-family dwelling. Also, the petitioner should submit in writing to remove the special permit status for the in-law. So that would need to come off, currently being granted to him. Uh, the petitioner has the responsibility to make sure the criteria under zoning by law 17552G table of off-street parking regulations has been met. So all that stuff you'd have to make sure you're in compliance. If we grant this, all that stuff you'd still have to go through.
Yeah, my driveway's.
Huge.
It's 130, 100, probably 100 actually. It's about 160 feet long, you can park nine cars at the bottom, plus then it gets narrow enough. So, I mean, I have tons of parking.
Yeah, I know.
But they just wanted us to, they just wanted us to point that out to you, that just because you get, if we were to grant this, doesn't mean you're not, you still, you still have to work that with building department to get.
Yeah, everything else, I think, I mean, you know, building, you know, structural wise, you know?
And you're pretty much away from your neighbors anyway, right? This is not really tight, this is on both sides. It's not really tight there, right?
No, it's on the corner and it's got his lot on both sides, it's nice.
Yeah.
Do you know, do you know how, if there are other two families in that neighborhood?
Yes, um, the house next to me, uh, on my left side, there's an older home there and there's like a studio. It's separate and it's a studio apartment out back.
There is.
Originally that was a school teacher from in the, I don't know, 1930s or something. That was a school teacher's house. He rents that out.
Okay.
One, two, what's it? Four houses down is a multifamily. And there's a couple more down by the corner. The old white farmhouse, if you, you know, with my house, you go to this old white farmhouse there.
And then the bottom of the hill, there's a duplex on the left-hand side also.
There's, there's a few of them on the street.
So the neighborhood, it's not, the neighborhood is kind of a mixed, mixed.
It is.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Hart?
Well, no, he's.
So I'm going to ask you to step back, Kurt, and then, uh, see if anybody's, anybody in the, uh, public who wants to speak on this? If not, we'll bring it back to the board.
Motion to.
You want to close the hearing?
Close the hearing.
And a second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? All right, okay, so the hearing's closed. So again, the same criteria applies for the special permit.
Yeah, I just, this would be a first for me, um, um, dealing with this type of a call. This is, there's definitely not two-family material here. It's definitely, you know, one.
So again, can you authorize a use without, um, which if controlled as to the number, area, location, relation to the neighborhood and other characteristics, would not be injurious to the public health, safety, welfare, morals, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, prosperity, or general welfare? So.
The neighborhood, what's it?
There's two families in the neighborhood.
There are duplexes and two-family coming up the hill.
When it was an in-law, there were two fam, basically two families living there.
Right, right.
And three houses before his house is already a two-family there too. It's got the, the two sep, with the separation in between.
I forgot about that one.
That one, I, I looked at that one when the first owner moved out about seven years ago. I helped them clean everything out of their house for them, so. But that's a two-family also.
Oh, is that one?
So again.
Next to them, there's a two-family, the old farmhouse.
Correct, yeah.
As we, as we discussed, we, if you want to put a condition on it, that'd be just for a one-bedroom apartment, we can do that.
And that's what that is, right?
Double check. I don't see how we could add more.
I know, but it's still.
No, we want to make sure that it's.
It's a good idea.
Is the lift, it's going to, will you leave the lift there?
I took, I took the lift out.
Far enough?
Already, that's gone.
That's gone. Okay, I, and we have to add to the same condition, the conditions.
Well, actually, that lift on the, excuse me, that lift on the, I was thinking of the chairlift for my mother.
No.
The lift on, in, on the drawing there.
Yeah.
My mother didn't want that.
So you never built it in the first place?
Never put in, it was just stairs.
I did, that's, I just wanted to ask, that's all.
Showing on your drawing.
I apologize, but, uh, the conditions that the building.
You could put those on.
Would be also on there. Would be also on there.
I think it's a good idea.
So that, that's, would be my recommendation, that we would set the condition at, at being a one-bedroom.
Yes.
Unit, and that it would follow the conditions set by the building department.
Yep.
In the May 31st email from them, to meet those.
Standards.
Standards of three, four, or five, and six. Does that make sense to you?
Uh, four, I think, uh, number four definitely applies, and number five, yes. So I would say four and five.
Four and five? Three doesn't need to be there?
You have that. These two.
There is, there is nothing to say that it's a one duplex, right, dwelling, in our bylaws? One duplex?
By special permit, it became, it can be a two-family, and it.
Or a, or a, it says here, um.
Or a one duplex dwelling.
What was that?
Yeah, one-two-family or one duplex dwelling.
Is that what we're looking for?
We're looking for.
That wording?
Two-family.
Okay, two, two family, okay.
Yeah. I can give you this after. Okay, so the motion is to approve the request for a special permit, with the condition that it be a one-bedroom apartment.
Yeah.
That the in-law apartment that's being converted is to be a one-bedroom apartment.
Correct.
Right.
And that, um, numbers four and five on the.
The conditions.
Conditions.
May 31st.
From Marion.
From Marion.
Be included as.
Included in this.
Conditions.
Condition.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
I will second it.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good luck.
Alright, good luck with that.
Yep.
Take care, good luck.
Oh, that's.
Stay healthy, yeah.
I'm already past that, aren't I?
Good luck now. Take care.
Next on the agenda is the petition of Ashley Diaz, 468 Randolph Street. Good evening, who are you?
Good.
Let me just read the notice. Public hearing notice, the town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 12th, 2022, at 7:30 PM at the Abington Town Office's 500 Glen Wits Way, Abington, on the petition of Ashley Diaz for a special permit under 175-35I for an in-law apartment at 468 Randolph Street. The property is located on Assessors Map 51, lots six and seven, in the R30 zone. Who are you?
Good.
Good. Can you just give us your name and address?
Ashley Diaz, 468 Randolph Street.
Just briefly describe what you're looking to have us do.
Basically, the prior owners had a special permit for the in-law. We bought it, and we want, well, my parents already lived there, so we just wanted to continue the special permit for it.
So you know the same condition would apply, it's only for while you're living there? When you sell it, will the buyers that would have to come in and do the same?
And you have to update, well, do you, once do you have to come back?
Yeah, the building department sends out an affidavit for you to sign, saying that it's being used just by relatives who are permitted in the bylaw.
And of course, this is already built, right?
Yeah.
Yep, it's been.
Yeah, it's been in law previously.
A long time.
Okay, any questions?
Nope.
So I'm gonna ask you to step back, see if anybody here wants to have any comment, anybody in the public make any comment? If not, we'll bring it back to the board.
Close the.
We have a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
In a second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is closed, and now act on the petition.
I'd like to propose, on the petition, Ashley Diaz for a special permit under 175-35I for an in-law apartment at 468 Randolph Street. It's pre-existing, if the property is located on Assessors Map 51, lots six and seven, in the R30 zone, be approved for continued use of an in-law suite.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous?
Good luck.
Great, thank you. Hold on one second, Cassie has to give you something.
You don't get away with that, so.
That's right.
Some cable. Dan, and Dan.
Ice cream.
What's this ice cream?
Don't say anything.
This is a special. Petition of Anderson Realty Trust, 123 Center Avenue.
Here they come.
We'll read the notice again. Public hearing notice, the town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 12th. That's, was this, oh, it was on the other one, that's right.
Oh, have we been doing that?
Thursday, May 12th, 2022.
We've been doing that, we're working hard on that one.
At 7:35 PM at the Abington Town Office's 500 Glen Wits Way, Abington, on petition of Anderson Realty Trust for a special permit under section 175-21D2 for the storage and preparation of ice cream at 123 Center Avenue. The property is located on Assessors Map 23, lot 139, in the R30 zone.
And just remind everybody, it's June 9th, 2022.
Yes, it is.
Just for.
This is on our agenda for the last meeting, but we canceled because we didn't have enough.
Just for, uh, yeah, okay, just for the ship and giggles.
All right, so can you just give us your name and address, please?
My name's Eric Anderson, I live at 17 Roxton Road in Hambrook.
Okay. Mr. Anderson, why don't you just tell us what you're looking to do here?
So this property has been an industrial commercial since the late 1800s. If you do remember the Buchmann car, which was technically, well, according to the Abington Historical Society, the first VA car made in America. He also did the, repaired and manufactured the shoe equipment for the Rockin Shoe Factories. After that, I'm not exactly sure what happened, then my grandfather purchased the property somewhere around the sixties, and then we ran Anderson Insulation out of that location, and he then built all the other outbuildings at the time. We have used the property, the brick building and the smaller building for storage, and what ended up happening a few years ago, the roof caved in in this particular building. I then went and got a permit to demolish the building and resurrect the building, which I had done already. You may know, you may see on the architectural plans, it looks like the building is attached to the building next to it, but actually is not. It's just simply to close that one foot, two-foot gap, and to keep people from storing stuff in there, keep the critters out, but structurally, they are not actually attached, so.
When did, when did you get that building permit?
Um, this year.
This year?
Yeah, this year.
So all the work's been done?
It's all been done, I'm just waiting on some electrical things, and then I'm gonna insulate this.
So what were you building it, were you building it for this particular use, or?
We, we did not know what was gonna go in there, but because we did demolish that big two-story building back in 2015, we never got a permit to resurrect it, and too much time had passed, so I couldn't resurrect it, and I made the mistake of not doing it, and this time around, I made sure not to. I didn't want to lose it, but I also didn't know what I was gonna use it for.
What was it being used for previously?
Previously, there was a steel welding guy in there, he moved out, we were using it to store insulation in there, and then after that, it stayed vacant for a little bit, and then the roof, I just opened the door, and the roof had caved in, and that's what I.
So it was being used for storage at that point?
Yes.
So can you just tell us what kind of business is gonna be in there?
Oh, sorry. So, what's going in there is, they are a ice cream food truck. What they're going, going there is they're really just storing their ice cream, storing their, their food truck inside, and then they are asking for, what, a cold kitchen, simply to just wash their utensils that come off the truck. That is all they're gonna use it for.
So what'd you say, that they're gonna store their vehicles inside?
Yes. It's not a big, high food truck, it's more like a van.
So is, are these like garage, is it a garage kind of structure that?
So it's a, there's a garage door on the front, and there was a garage door on the back, and there were three windows on the side, there was a door in the front and another door in the back. But when I, when I got the permit to rebuild the building, we built it exactly the same as what was there.
Oh.
Can you just come up and?
Cover?
Thanks. Just give us your name and ad, name and address, please.
So I'm, sorry, I'm Patrick, I'm the realtor. So they're actually, they're not.
What's your last name, Patrick?
Patrick Vertell.
Thanks.
They're actually not storing their, their ice cream food truck, they're actually would leave their personal car in a separated garage, so we would, there'd be a car for it, but in front of the building, there's a garage door with a wall separating their kitchen, storage area from the car. So it's, uh, they have like a little minivan. Their food truck is actually pretty big, wouldn't fit inside, so I just wanted to make sure that we do the work with this.
So the food preparation would be walled off from the car, car storage space?
There's really no food preparation, they're gonna.
No, let me clarify, that the, the cleaning area that you're looking for, the cold sink to wash their utensils, da-da-da, would be actually separate from any, any stored vehicle fumes or whatever, because.
Correct.
There'd be a wall petitioned between the two with the door.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And you're in front of us because the building inspector thought you needed to come here, is that?
So Marion said, because some time had passed, and that I'm in the R30 zone, I have to go and get a variance for every single tenant that I put in, unless they're going to use the building as the same use, which they would then pass over.
To the prior.
To the, to the next tenant, so.
Yeah, to the next tenant, yes.
So every time you change the tenant, you have to come back in front of us again? So it's a use variance?
It's a use variance.
Since it's a use variance.
Although, was it being used for storage before, and it's being used for storage now? I'm not sure where.
But not for vehicles before, though, I would imagine.
And just to also verify, it's not retail at all.
Right.
It's, it's operational.
Yes, exactly.
It's just storing, what was in there before?
We store insulation.
Insulation.
So was you, you were using it for your business?
Yeah, we're using it for our.
Insulation storage.
So can you, can you explain it one more time? A vehicle's gonna be parked inside the building, and there'll be a small kitchen.
There's one of.
What this is, what does this have to do with ice cream, I'm sorry?
Their business is an ice cream food truck.
Okay, okay.
So.
The only thing, the only thing else.
Are they actually manufacturing ice cream?
So they actually buy the ice cream from somebody else.
Yeah.
And then they put it on their food truck.
Right.
And then go to wherever and sell it.
So they're gonna store the ice cream in freezers in, in the unit?
Yeah.
Put it on their food truck?
Mm-hmm.
And then go somewhere else, and then come back and put the truck away?
And wash all the utensils.
Wash all the utensils.
Go back to work the next day.
The only, only thing that hits me is that it's never been used for a vehicle's storage since the 1800s or whatever.
But it was.
Vehicles were never parked in this building, so.
Is that the case, where no vehicles parked?
Not to my knowledge, but there were garage doors there to use.
Is it, is a building gonna be sprinkled?
No. So, if I can interject again, I'm sorry, so the car literally is just on occasion, if they wanted to, we could tell them that they just can't park the car inside.
I just.
It's not a deal breaker or a prerequisite, it's not something that they have to have, it's just that there's, the building is bigger than they need, and the, the way that the space is set up is they're gonna have an office in the front, which leaves a dead space where that their car would happen to fit in, that we don't need to.
That's my only concern, a vehicle inside the building, because as a firefighter, you know, that should be a sprinkler system probably, and that. And have you, have you talked to fire yet on this project?
I have not, but from my understanding, and I may be wrong, but I, my understanding, it doesn't, the building footprint doesn't meet requirement for sprinkling. But I may, I, I may be wrong.
But.
It's only 1,200 square feet.
Okay, but I'm, what I'm saying, though, is having a vehicle in there, where the building is.
That might change it, right?
Yeah, well, in my mind, it would, I mean, I just.
But that's not a deal breaker if, if the, if a variance were granted, that the.
Remove the car, the ability to put the car, park a car in there.
Right, I mean, that, just to be safe for the area, for the, all the buildings, for whatever, there, as you said, there's no sprinkler system in there. If you have a vehicle fire in that building, it's gonna be a mess.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Just, out of apparatus, if he needed to come back, because there was issues in May that they would like to park the car there, and Archie said, yeah, you'd have to put a sprinkler system in, would they have to come back in front of us again?
If that was the condition.
For, for a variance of that, change?
Correct.
Okay. I'd rather be safe than sorry, no offense to either one of you.
That's fine.
I would like to, if we are, if we could, if this was to go forward, I'd like to leave the vehicle out of the building at this moment in time, and if you needed, make a decision, bring the building, just come back in front of us again, and we'll try to expedite that request, uh.
Okay.
Get that done, but I, I, I lean towards whatever our firemen would say to me on this one, more than I would on my own base decision, so.
What, what else could that building be used for? Are there any other things that that could be used for?
Anything.
Anything.
Basically, he says, he says.
Is it, is it wood or metal, did you say?
It was a wood frame structure.
No, what is it now?
A wood frame structure.
It's wood frame structure. Is there heat in there? Is there heat in?
Yes, it has, it'll have, it's propane heat, small AC, fully insulated, there's a bathroom in there, and the whole thing is all flat, so it's all handicap accessible, and then there's just a three-basing for them to wash, what they have to wash.
Then it's the board of health equipment, even more strong.
Mm-hmm. I don't think there's anything really else, I mean.
So did, did I hear you say there's gonna be some office work done in there as well? Is that?
There's a small office space in the front.
Yeah, in front, there's a 10 by 12 office, a walk-in, a walk-in door, but it'll just be a pass-through, like, just have a desk and a chair.
If we're gonna, if, if this is gonna be granted, I think you want to be as specific as possible as to what uses are, so if it's gonna be some small office space, I think that needs to be included in the grant of a variance, otherwise, you put an office in there, and somebody comes down and says, this isn't allowed, and you're gonna be, to, you just make sure that we cover everything that you're looking for here.
Yeah. I think, really, it's just, just the storage, the cold sink, the cold kitchen to wash, and the 10 by 12 office in the front.
Storage exclusively for ice cream.
Correct.
And we're gonna say that.
Yes.
Well, I would say ice cream, you know, the ice cream truck, I mean, I would imagine they'll probably have.
Were you talking food?
No, I don't understand, just ice cream, but I would imagine they'll have their supplies there as well, they'll probably.
Ice cream related, ice cream and ice cream.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
And I would imagine they're not gonna have, you know, somebody in the office working 40 hours a week, it's.
Just someplace to do business.
Yeah.
If you need to.
How, how big is the office?
About 12. And the, the truck has already been approved by the city government. It's already comfortable, obviously.
I must say, it was a great story that you had there. I read the whole thing, the history, that's amazing.
Yeah, yeah.
The only problem I have, like I said, is with the vehicle being stored inside the building, I mean.
But you can, you can.
I mean, you could go to the fire department and talk to them about it, but that would be my.
No vehicle storage will be allowed on the property at this time.
Do we want to make a contingent on the fire department's study, or do we want to just leave it that way?
See, I can leave it that way.
I think if the fire department agrees that they could store a vehicle without hazard, hazard, and without needing a sprinkler system, would they still have to come back in front of us for that change?
Well, I, maybe you could say no vehicle storage allowed on the property.
That's what I was gonna say, no vehicle.
Without, without the approval of the fire.
Yeah.
Department.
Approval of fire department. I can do that.
All right, sounds, sounds like a good thing for the town, sounds like a good thing for everybody.
So, and they're gonna be clean, you said they're gonna be cleaning?
Utensils, whatever.
Whatever.
Whatever they use on the ice cream truck.
Utensils.
Scoops.
Yeah, scoops.
Whatever, spatulas, stuff like that.
Again, this is a variance, so we have, those same provisions, or those same conditions have to be met.
Yeah, well, we, I mean, look at the, look where it is, I mean.
I'm pretty comfortable where it is.
It's pretty jammed in there, it's.
Property's been.
It's a historical building, if you will.
It's been multiple garages, and Spencer's has been there forever, and, but there's been multiple use of the property behind it.
Because wetlands, I mean, it's got everything.
Yeah.
It's got everything.
Got it all.
It does.
It really does.
It does.
Nothing it doesn't meet.
Okay.
I'm good.
I'm gonna ask you to sit back and see if anybody in the public wants to say anything.
See if any goes.
Wait, wait.
See if any goes.
Everyone, wait.
Make sure there's not crap.
Can we, can we make sure they have coffee ice cream, please? I want a mandate, they have to have coffee ice cream.
So do you have any questions? Because we're gonna close the hearing, and that means you guys are finished, so.
Motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
In a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay, so, what's the pleasure of the board here? Right.
Can we make sure they have coffee, ice cream, please? I wanna mandate they have to have coffee.
Do you have any questions? Because we're gonna close the hearing and that means you guys are finished, so.
Motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
In a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, what's the pleasure of the board here?
I would like to, unless you want to.
No, you go ahead.
Fine. At the request, uh, on June 9th, 2022, the petition from Anderson Realty Trust for a special permit under 175-21D2 for storage and preparation of ice cream at 123 Avenue. The property is located on assessors map 23, lot 139, in the R30 zone, with the following conditions.
Wait, actually, we're not granting a special permit here.
We are not creating a special permit. We're creating a variance.
Variance, uh, use variance, correct?
Use variance. Yeah, but you can just say, I think, a variance.
Just a variance. For a variance, uh, under, is it under 175-21D, section 2? For the storage and preparation of ice cream at 123 Center Ave. Property is located in assessors map 23, lot 139, in zone R30, uh, with the following conditions, that, uh, the building will be used for storage of ice cream and ice cream supply processes, that a small cold kitchen will be used for cleaning of utensils, that no vehicle storage will be allowed without the approval of the fire department, and whatever conditions they set, and.
Office space.
They'll, we will allow an office space, uh, currently set to be 10 by 12.
That's it? All right, I second that.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Guys have it.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Okay, good luck. Hope everything works out good.
Well, hold on, guys. Cassie has something for you.
We don't want you to leave without everything you don't need.
Thanks for that history on the building, that was interesting. Well, we'll be here. Well. Well, somebody might be in Spain. Well, yeah.
That place looked beautiful, so.
Yeah, I, I, that place was looked.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, we look forward to it. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good night.
Right.
I'm thinking maybe they should rezone that, the R30 zone, isn't it?
That's not a R30 zone. But it's been there forever, right?
Ever, ever, ever.
I know, well, I'll tell you the truth, I know there's been talk of it.
Has you?
Yep.
Um, we have the, the, the proposed changes for.
Yep.
The zoning board?
Yep. Do you want that? You have it. So why don't we look at the fee schedule first? What the hell, what am I, fee schedule? Why don't we let Cassie do a little presentation here too? Because she's the one who developed a lot of this.
Yay!
She did a lot of work on it and did a really nice job, so.
And now she's leaving us.
Yeah.
See, we worked it too hard.
She's leaving us in good stead here, because we've got all this stuff.
We worked it too hard.
We appreciate that, so.
Yeah, so Marion and I actually moved together just to update all the licenses. Um, we've compared it to this round in town, so. One of the R's is pretty low. So do you want me to go?
Yeah, if you wanted, yeah.
Yeah, so, um.
I'll give you some airtime.
We moved the waiver up to 200, um, the variance for, um, for the residential properties, for a variance, special permit and finding, we moved that to 200. For a three-family, greater variance or special permit, 300 plus 25 a unit. And then mixed commercial, and then the, this is for the variance and special permit, 300. And then all the deals, again, 200, that was up. That was originally at 50.
50.
So we wanted to move that up. And then the wetlands one, residential property, 200. Three-family, 300, and then commercial, 500. And we did not have the comprehensive permit fees on the last schedule, so we added that here. So for limited dividend organizations, it's 2,000 flat fee plus $100 per unit. And then for nonprofits, 1,500 flat fee and then $50 per unit.
Does this bring us up to the associated bordering towns pretty much equally with everything?
I don't know if you remember, John Shepherd did a big.
Yeah, right.
Review of these, but that was a number of years ago. And, uh, he did a lot of work on it. It's been a long time since these have been looked at, so. And you said the selectmen were looking for some direction. They don't want you after approval.
Yes, of course. Of course. Let's see, you got the different zones here, the Muppet. Low density, technology, is technology still?
Technology still.
Is it still there? I thought it was gone. Which one is gone now? Out of, um, Route 18.
Oh, I don't know.
I think the technology businesses are gone.
Yeah.
We may have to take those out. Just double check with the book. I think that was taken out by the planning board, was it? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I was using the map on the wall and that.
Right, right.
So do you want us to take a vote on this? Is that what you're looking for? You and Marion?
The full of the fees and I guess.
Well, the fees, that's, yeah, we're talking about the fees first, so.
Well, I'm sorry, I stepped onto the next.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, why don't we do the, yeah, so.
The fees are great.
Okay.
Motion, motion to approve the new filing fee schedule.
Should we be waiting for the other group or just go on?
No, I think.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I apologize. Didn't mean to go over this.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the zoning board appeals new filing fee schedule presented tonight on D9, 2022.
Second, and had to be approved by the selectmen.
Yeah, they have to approve. Okay, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, why don't we look at the instructions next?
Those instructions, okay.
What do you hand out now, Cassie, when you, when they come in to look for you?
Yeah.
But there is something they get.
Yeah, it's, this one is a modified version. It's cleaned up because the first one, copy of copy.
Yeah, yeah. I think this is nice.
So Richard, I think you said that the technology section on the zoning district may not be there anymore?
Yeah, we gotta double check that.
For both business and commercial?
They might have, uh, taken that out. We'd have to take a look. Did we read the instructions? Is that what you want us to do?
Have you looked at it?
Yeah, I did.
Do you have any comment on it?
No, I think it's great. I think it's, um, it's a lot more depth.
It's clean.
Yeah, and, you know, now you expect people to show up with everything instead of a pencil drawing. Right, yeah.
Well, I also love the incomplete packet piece. I thought that was a very effective.
That, um, that is hopefully as like a last.
Resort.
Resort.
Hopefully, we don't need it too often. But it's still a very good idea.
All right, so I, I had a couple of comments on, on the, um, instructions on, on page two, number three. It was just a typo there. One, two, the third line down. If copies are desired, it should be right. Opposed, desire. And then I think we should add in here, um, another number, setting out what the burden of proof is for the petitioner. That's right in, I think, our handbook. So if you, I think, if you, I can email it to you tomorrow, but if you just take the first couple of lines in there. Just so the petitioner knows, this is what, it's on me, it's on me to prove to the board.
Not for the board to prove to them.
For you, yeah.
Like we just did?
Exact.
Hey, 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 hey. Sorry? Tell the truth.
On number six, D, and we changed the word eventually to after public input has concluded. And then the ZBA will close the hearing. And then the, um, letter E, the ZBA will discuss the petition amongst themselves versus Mag. That's all I have on it. Anybody else have anything on the instructions?
Could you clarify what you did on D again, Andy? I mean, you took the word eventually out and put after.
After the public input has concluded, the ZBA will close the hearing through the public for comments indoor.
Will, okay.
Just because it's not just the chairman who closed it, so you take that vote. All right. Why don't we go to reasons for an appeal, variance, special permit and finding, which is very helpful tonight? So my, my only comments would be on each of these. If we could add in what vote is required of the board. So, you know, like on appeal, it's unanimous vote of the board.
Okay.
Just so people know, variance is a unanimous vote. All the way down, just each different one. But doesn't matter, that was great. Very helpful.
Could you, when you send that to her, that, that, those two lines, could you just send that to both Richard and I also?
Yeah, she'll, she can send it back up.
I just wanna, I just wanna reread that, that's all. Thank you. Any other thing?
Any other things, any other?
I, you actually picked up on things I didn't even, I read right over, so. I thought it was well done, though.
Very well.
Thank you very much for the time and attention.
And we have certified plot plan requirements for submission?